All right, good evening and welcome to the December 13th Board of Education meeting. Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will begin with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much, good evening, and thank you for joining us this evening for our December 13th Board of Education meeting. This is our one and only board meeting for the month of December, as we know that everyone is busy with the many, many holiday events, concerts, and programs taking place in all of our schools. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to be the chaperone for a group of eighth grade students on a trip to Ellis Island. As you might imagine, no trips of this kind have taken place for several years. It was an absolute delight, and I'm pleased to share that none of my students were the victims of the highly aggressive sandwich-stealing seagulls that made off with a number of lunches. In addition, all of my students not only made it back to Rye, they also completed the family artifact project that had been assigned, so I consider this to have been a big win. Later that night, I attended my first holiday concert of the season, the Rye Middle School Choral Concert, which was really terrific. Last night, I enjoyed the high school vocal and percussion concert, and if you haven't been to one of those, you should definitely go to the next one. And later this week, we have the middle school orchestra and band performances, and I know Doctors Murray and Am are looking forward to attending those. This evening, we will be sharing our professional learning efforts around critical thinking and the Rye Commitment. In April, we will invite students to share their work with the board and the community around critical thinking, and I'm so pleased that two students will be a part of tonight's presentation, as they are members of the Rye Commitment Leadership Team that has done really important work in this area. On tonight's agenda for board's consideration, we have a memorandum of agreement with the Westchester Jewish Community Services Organization. We've been collaborating with the Westchester County Office of Community Mental Health and WJCS to set up a satellite mental health clinic for students and families of the Rye Schools at 324 Midland since last fall. We had originally hoped that the clinic would launch in November, but ran into some bureaucratic challenges and stumbling blocks along the way, and one that we faced was of funding. By education law, we discovered that school districts are not legally allowed to pay for satellite mental health services. Literally, it says that in the education law. It makes no sense to me, but I will say we are deeply grateful and indebted to county legislator Catherine Parker, who is also a Rye resident and member of our school community, and Westchester County, and I believe our wonderful county executive, also a resident of Rye, approved the budget today for providing the funding to launch this really important and necessary resource for our community. So the $50,000 that was necessary to make this happen for the district's contribution has been covered by Westchester County. Thank you, Catherine, thank you, George, thank you, Westchester County, in addition to the funding that WJCS is putting up to make this happen as well. So our latest thinking is that we hope to be able to launch in February. There's a step now that's going to happen after the board considers, and should you approve the memorandum of agreement, it would go to the state of New York for approval to launch. We'll get the space organized over at 324, and WJCS will hire the staff, and we will get that process rolling, and hopefully in February, be happy to launch and share that out with the community once we have set timelines and dates. We'll be looking forward to that. And we will provide much more information to the community as the launch approaches. And since our next meeting will take place after the winter break, I'd like to take this opportunity, wish everyone a healthy, happy holiday season. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right, wonderful, thank you. And that is really great news about the Westchester Jewish Community Services and Westchester County helping to work to once again really focus on students' wellbeing and mental health services. And it's a great collaboration and one that we are really excited about, and we look forward to all the great opportunities that'll provide for our community and our students, hopefully in February. Okay, moving on, we have our presentation and discussion for critical thinking. Dr. Murray?
Okay, hello, good evening. Tonight, I'll be giving you an overview of the professional learning that we are currently doing on critical thinking and how that is impacting the curriculum and instruction moving forward. And I'm excited that I'm joined by two students, we have Juliette Hamlin here and Michael Talbot, who will also be talking about their experience in participating in our critical thinking learning walks. So one of the main goals of the Rye Commitment is to be able to foster critical thinking skills, so students are able to creatively solve problems in a diverse global environment. And critical thinking can be taught to students if we teach them the explicit skills and abilities and dispositions that are necessary in order to build the critical thinking skills. And so the goal of our critical thinking work this year is to increase the level of critical thinking across content areas in order to further the work of the Rye Commitment. So this isn't just in, you know, in a couple of different places, it really is K-12 across all content areas. And I just wanted us to view a short clip from a video, so you get a sense of the kinds of resources that we are providing to faculty. This is one that we showed at the beginning of the year, and we're really starting our work, so teachers can understand what critical thinking is and what it involves.
Critical thinking is a term that gets thrown around a lot. You've probably heard it used often throughout the years, whether it was in school, at work, or in everyday conversation. But when you stop to think about it, just what exactly is critical thinking, and how do you do it? Simply put, it's the act of deliberately analyzing information so that you can make better judgments and decisions. It involves using things like logic, reasoning, and creativity to draw conclusions and generally understand things better. This may sound like a pretty broad definition, and that's because critical thinking is a broad skill that can be applied to so many different situations. You can use it to prepare for a job interview, manage your time better, make decisions about purchasing things, and so much more. Now, as humans, we are constantly thinking. It's something we can't turn off. But not all of it is critical thinking. No one thinks critically 100% of the time. That would be pretty exhausting. Instead, it's an intentional process, something that we consciously use when we're presented with difficult problems or important decisions. In order to become a better critical thinker, it's important to ask questions when you're presented with a problem or a decision before jumping to any conclusions. You can start with simple ones like, "What do I currently know?", and "How do I know this?". These can help to give you a better idea of what you're working with, and in some cases, simplify more complex issues. Let's take a look at how we can use critical thinking to evaluate online information. Say a friend of yours posts a news article on social media, and you're drawn to its headline. If you were to use your everyday automatic thinking, you might accept it as fact and move on. But if you were thinking critically, you would first analyze the available information and ask some questions. What's the source of this article? Is the headline potentially misleading? What are my friends' general beliefs, and do they inform why they might have shared this? After analyzing all of this information, you can draw a conclusion about whether you think the article is trustworthy. Critical thinking has a wide range of applications in the real world. It can help you to make better decisions, become more hireable, and generally help you to better understand the world around you. Critical thinking is a term that gets thrown around a lot.
So we really made it a priority to give resources to the faculty that will be very clearly define what critical thinking is, so they can see what it is and then all that it involves. So we define critical thinking as the act of deliberately analyzing information to make better judgments and decisions, knowing that there is an outcome. You're evaluating information, data, sources for a specific purpose. It involves logic, reasoning, and creativity in order to draw conclusions and come to an understanding, there's an overall result that comes out of it. It includes the skills of questioning, evaluating, interpreting, and synthesizing, and we use that vocabulary with students when we're teaching them how to do those specific skills. So when you go into a classroom and really think about what would critical thinking look like, there are things that teachers would be doing and students would be doing. So the most important thing a teacher would be doing is really posing an open-ended problem that requires decision-making. Students are not able to think critically if we're not presenting them with tasks or challenges that demand that type of thinking. So we really want to make sure that the types of tasks we're offering students require critical thinking. Teachers would be providing resources with different perspectives, not just giving one resources, but multiple, and also modeling when you're going through those resources and teaching how to ask questions. So throughout the entire process, critical thinking process, you're going to want to ask questions before, during, and even after. Being explicit with the language of critical thinking, you'd hear words like "evaluate", "synthesize", and promote self-reflection and feedback, knowing that the end of the process isn't just the end. There's a time for you to reflect, knowing that you're going to learn lessons the next time you have to use that type of thinking. And then what will you see students doing? Really using an intentional process to make a decision. When they're faced with a challenging task, not just going in there, kind of not really having a plan or being aware of the type of thinking that the task requires of them, but being very intentional and knowing that it's going to be a thoughtful process and it might take some time. You might start thinking one thing, and then you might go somewhere else, and ultimately, after you do all of your evaluating, you'll land somewhere. Evaluating resources to understand varying perspectives, knowing that the resources that their teachers are giving them, they're giving them different resources because they offer multiple perspectives, they will not all be the same, and they're going to get different information from different sources. We want to teach students to ask purposeful questions. Probably one of the most complex types of thinking tasks is being able to ask a question when you're presented with any kind of information. Using the vocabulary that the teacher is teaching and recognizing that the usage of the vocabulary is important because it means they're recognizing that they're actually doing those skills. And then engaging in self-reflection and peer feedback to improve their own thinking process. And that's also based on criteria. We want to give students a criteria to do that, because that will lift the whole, the thinking within the whole process. So with our professional learning this year, it's taken place in a few different ways. Over the summer, the administrators designed professional learning for faculty during our admin retreat, and that professional learning's taking place during faculty meetings. So you'll see that on top there, it says the faculty meetings during the first part of the year are really focusing on what critical thinking is, what are the skills it involves, the abilities, and the dispositions. And then the middle of the year, we're turning our attention towards thinking routines, which is like a deliberate process you use to analyze a question or a task or even a source. And then also questioning is something that we're going to be speaking about after the new year. What types of questions are teachers asking, what types of questions are students asking in the classroom, and how can we lift the level of those? And then also, at this point in the school year, our departments are doing their own professional learning with a specific focus towards critical thinking during their department meetings, so you have that learning taking place as well. At the end of the year, faculty and departments will be sharing, will be hosting kind of sharing sessions during faculty meetings and department meetings. Reflection will be a part of that, and feedback will be a part of that. So that's the work taking place in that capacity. In addition to that, we started a learning walk group. We called it the Rye Commitment Leadership Group. It started last year, if you recall. It was a group of about 30 students, teachers, and administrators who wanted to gain a better understanding of what critical thinking looks like in the classroom, and then they created a learning walk tool. And it says just that, it's like, what are the teachers doing, very similar to the slide I showed. What are the teachers doing, what are the students doing? And we developed it last year. This fall, in October, we came back together to calibrate the learning walk tool. So we tried it out in some classrooms and really made sure that what one person in the group thought they were seeing, others did as well. And then in January, we're going to be teaching department coordinators and grade-level leaders on how to use that learning walk tool and how to lead their own learning walks across the district. The vision there being that we want this tool to really kind of be part of our culture of professional learning, that we just have ongoing learning walks really kind of analyzing our growth in this area. And I would actually, at this point, like to invite up Juliette Hamlin, who is one of the students who's been involved in this process, so she can share her perspective on it.
I'm a junior at Rye High School. It was great to be a part of the experience as a collaborator, not just being taught about critical thinking, but helping to develop it. That was really exciting for me, especially for me, critical thinking is really an opportunity for me to engage with the content instead of just being taught it, which is really exciting and interesting in my classes. I'm able to ask deeper questions. I often find myself revising my ideas based on what other people are saying, because I'm kind of listening to them, and then we're building a new idea together, and it kind of forms that habit for me like early on, so later in life, I'll be able to use it in my job, and just like, as the video said, just looking at the world around me. So I think that during the learning walks and during the commitment group, I was able to offer my perspective on what critical thinking is as compared to a teacher's. So I was able to say what critical thinking is being used in my classes, both by teachers and by students, what seems to be successful, the types of critical thinking I find to be most helpful to me. I was also able to comment on like the disconnect sometimes I see and what I saw in the classroom. So if a teacher is intending to use critical thinking but doesn't phrase the question in exactly like the correct, open-minded way, that sometimes a student might respond like with a yes or no answer, because we're not actively always thinking about using critical thinking. So I think finding ways to motivate students in the future and teach them how to respond critically would be great. And also, sometimes it is like on the students' part, like I have a teacher, Mr. Krech, a big fan of Mr. Krech, but he's my line teacher this year. I also had him last year, and he likes to ask us a lot of open-ended questions when we're reading a book. And, you know, during class discussions, he'll say, "I want you guys to raise your hand, I want you guys to come up with the ideas about the book." And sometimes kids just don't want to raise their hands and give their own ideas, so that's kind of a common theme in our classroom, and he always says, "I want you guys to be doing the talking." So I think finding ways, as I said, to like motivate kids to share their own ideas and respond critically. And then lastly, when I was doing the learning walks, I saw a lot of critical thinking in the elementary school classrooms, and I was able to check off a lot of boxes, and I didn't realize how much work went into like even elementary school lessons. That was really cool. But when I was in the high school and looking at critical thinking, it was kind of different. I wasn't able to check off some of the boxes, and I wonder if, just from my own experience, that's because in higher-level AP classes, there's so much content to get through in such a short amount of time. So if maybe like a new definition, maybe, or just a different criteria for critical thinking, especially in the high school, could be something to look forward to in the future. But yeah, I got a lot out of this experience. I hope I was able to offer something in return, and I'm excited to keep working on it and use critical thinking in my classroom and my life, so, thank you.
And I'd have to say, Juliette and I were in the same group, and we had some really good conversation around what she was seeing in fifth grade versus what she was experiencing here as a junior at Rye High School. So it was good fun to be part of the same group.
That was great to work with you.
And Michael, you want to come up?
Thank you, Dr. Murray. My name is Michael Talbot. I'm a freshman at Rye High School, and I really enjoyed the opportunity to collaborate with all the important people in my school district. Over the past year, I've been to three critical thinking meetings, and I have three takeaways to share with you all today. First off, the tool itself. What is it? It's a checklist for teachers and students that promotes critical thinking with things like divergent questions that are not yes or no answers, and there is no right answer, and they're probing questions that try to get a thoughtful answer from the students. Looking at the checklist consistently creates a common direction among the teachers, which leads to my second point, which is a transition from the middle school to the high school as a student. If the teachers and students consistently follow the checklist throughout middle and high school, the working concepts naturally will get more complex and harder to understand, but the students will know what to expect, how they'll receive it from the teachers, and they can always rely on their established critical thinking habits. Lastly, it's all about the environment. In science class last year, we learned about sore throats, and it all starts with one bacterium in your throat, and the perfect environment for a bacterium is a warm, wet, humid environment, and that's, the throat is perfect for that. So when you get one bacterium in your throat, quickly, it will multiply and divide and get bigger and bigger, and eventually, you have a sore throat. So for us, following the checklist consistently creates a perfect environment for students to critically think. Thank you so much for the privilege to be a part of the learning walks and this meeting here today.
Well, Michael, thank you for being here, and Michael had some incredible insights when we were calibrating the tool at Midland, which is how he ended up here, because he really brought so much to the table, so thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne.
And then, thank you. And just to comment, you know, Juliette was bringing up this, the idea that it's difficult for students to think critically in class when you pose them, you know, challenging tasks. It's hard work, and I think we do, there is a piece there where we have to motivate students to really be engaged and to want that kind of work and to put the energy into it, for sure.
And it sort of removes, and Juliette, you may be able to speak to this better than I, that whole notion of trying to predict what the right answer is that the teacher wants. And students will often hesitate, and, you know, they're trying to figure out what's the right thing to say, as opposed to what's the thing that they're thinking right now to say.
So in addition to the learning walks, other types of learning that's happening during our superintendent's conference days, the one that we had in November was when we taught teachers how to design critical challenges and gave them criteria for doing that. So that's just a learning task. We taught them how to design the open-ended learning tasks that involve the critical thinking or would demand that of students. And we, and at the elementary level, they designed lessons on how to explicitly teach dispositions of critical thinking, like flexibility and persistence and being open-minded, teaching that to the younger students in our district. And then during the March Conference Day, teachers will be in a good place to have some choice workshops around critical thinking, so teachers who want to learn more about questioning or the thinking routines or more, or on how to design critical challenges can enter that work on that day as well. So as I said, our 612 and our K-12 departments chose a specific focus, according to their discipline, that they really wanted to focus on to increase the amount of critical thinking in their content area. And here are just some examples of that work. So the mathematics department, the work that they're doing is that they're using vertical writing surfaces, so basically whiteboards, some are rolling whiteboards or just kind of the wall writers around the classroom, to display student work based on open-ended tasks. So the whole department, they're actually being guided by a text called Building Thinking Classrooms, but they're really thinking carefully about the types of tasks they're offering students, what's worthy, what task is worthy of going and being put on a whiteboard for the whole class to see and discuss, and then making sure that the student's thinking is very visible is the goal there. And then in our music department, they've been wanting to get at the self-reflection piece in terms of critical thinking and how can students really better understand themselves as musicians and where they want to go next. So they're implementing rubrics, self-reflection rubrics, across all of our music classes, and they're going to be piloting those and putting those in place in the spring. And then in terms of science, our science department right now is rolling up the NGSS standards, these are new standards, and part of that is to create learning tasks that are built on a scientific phenomenon. And so this fits in really nicely with our critical thinking work, because they've started designing units around the phenomenon and making sure that kids have the skills and the critical thinking skills to look at all of the evidence and the data to build a claim. So just so you have some examples of what that work looks like. As I said, during our conference day, we taught, we teach us how to design a critical challenge. What you'll see on this slide on the left is our checklist of things that you need to, that would describe what a critical challenge is, their characteristics of a critical challenge. So you'll see that a critical challenge asks students to make a decision about how to act, what to think, or how to solve a problem, or asks them to create something, has multiple good possible approaches or responses, requires more than retrieval of information, invites talk and collaboration, and is meaningful for students, so it's contextualized for them. And the teachers in the 6 through 12, the K-12 departments that did this kind of work, the feedback was very positive. They just, they enjoy the time with their colleagues. They were asked to co-create a lesson. We taught them about the difference between a small critical challenge and medium one. So a small one is like something you can get done in one class period, a medium one over a few class periods, and then a large, like a unit project. And then what you're looking at on the right there, they just did a quick description and a jam board at the end of the day of the tasks that they worked on. You have two examples up there, from English, the top right is from math, and then you have an art one as well. And then in terms of next steps, first of all, I should just say that this is not kind of a one-year project. I think in order to do critical thinking very well, it's a multi-year project, for sure. I'm excited that the learning walks have been put in place, because that is something that we, as I said, we really want to integrate into our school culture going forward. So the next steps would be to get those running across the district, led by teachers as much as possible, and then to continue that through next year. The professional learning will also continue during faculty meetings and on conference days. The workshops and service courses that we offer also focus on it. And then with the curriculum, as we continue to redesign curriculum, we'll be embedding critical thinking tasks and challenges within that work as well. So it's exciting. I think this year really gave us a strong foundation in our learning around critical thinking, and I'm excited for the work ahead. As Eric mentioned, at our April 18th board meeting, we're going to be doing a critical challenge exposition, where you'll hear from teachers and students about their work. Any questions?
That is all very exciting. I think the April 18th exposition will be a great opportunity to see a culmination of all of this great work from the last year and a half, and I'm going to be quite jazzed to be able to participate in that. Questions from the board? Thoughts, comments?
So I just have a comment mostly. So I feel like, looking back to when we first found this vision of the Rye Commitment, and then, you know, it was great because we had this vision, and it had all of this really amazing lofty goal-ish things in it. And then, and then we started to see how it was integrating into more of what we were doing on a daily basis, so it started to become part of curriculum design and, you know, it weaved throughout other areas of the school district. And now to see, this is the very next natural step, which is to look at the principles within that and to say, all right, it's not enough to just say we want to do this, we really want to see how it's happening, because the only way we can then continue to improve upon it is if we can actually see how it's coming into real-life use for these students. And when you talk about, and when the students talked about their experience with just the approach of thinking about things in a deeper way, it's just so, it's just, I will say, I am jealous as an adult. I am jealous as an adult, I'll put it that way. Because I feel like to have those skills become part of your regular thinking process at this point in time in your lives is such an amazing opportunity, and it's something to be taught, really, how to do it instead of having to figure out over time, like, oh, maybe I need to ask more questions about this, or maybe I need to look at something deeper here. But to actually have it become part of your daily work is just phenomenal. So I'm beyond excited about this for all of the students and for us as a district to see this coming to fruition. So thank you to everybody, all of you who participated, all of the teachers, Tricia, Dr. Byrne, everybody who, you know, is helping to continue this work, because it's so crucial, and it's so important for just, you know, sending these kids out into the adult world to be able to do this stuff. So, thank you.
And the role that the students play in this work is so, so important. And, you know, going into classrooms together with teachers, students, administrators, and having these rich conversations around what we're seeing, and are we all seeing what's happening? And what are we seeing teachers doing? What are we seeing students doing? It's really a powerful experience.
That's great.
I think one of the things that most impressed me about this whole process is that, really, as you were saying, critical thinking has to be taught. And I think we take it for granted that the tenants that are in the Rye Commitment, effective communication, collaboration, critical thinking, we say them, and then how do we see them? And then, more importantly, how do we teach them? And as you said, Juliette, it's a lot easier in fifth grade to engage kids in critical thinking. It takes a lot of work and planning. It's not easy, but it happens more naturally. Children are more inquisitive at that age than when you get to junior year, where you're in AP US History, and it's dates and times and facts. And we've had these conversations at the district level about depth versus width of knowledge, and so critical thinking feeds back into that. And then Michael also talked about the idea of the continuity of expectation and instruction for our middle school and our high school, and that helps us continue to ensure that this is a district of five schools, not five schools in one district. And so it's really this idea that you all at the administrative level are working at these really intentional acts that are all globally connected are the things that help make the district successful for our students, for our families, and for our kids. And we just, this is just the kind of stuff that a lot of times you can't get to, and it's the stuff that makes a district an exceptional place to work and to live and to get an opportunity to go to school. And I thank you wholeheartedly for it.
Okay, I did my wait time. Seeing no other comments or questions.
Keep going.
We will move on to the next part of our agenda. And thank you again to Michael and Juliette for coming tonight. We greatly appreciate your participation. Hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I'm going to ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes, so if you hear the timer, please wrap up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. If there's anyone from the public that would like to be heard, please come forward.
Good evening. I will be quick, because I have two little ones in the back that hopefully have not been too disruptive. My name is Kate. I'm an Osborne mom. I have a second and third grader, and I think I speak on the majority of the parents at the elementary school. I know you've probably seen a lot of my emails, and Eric, I know you don't want any more paper from me, but in the interest of time, I do have a little bit of paperwork to share with you. So this is essentially, this is, so that's just an executive summary. Make sure there's a lot of parents that are concerned about school lunches. So I did a pretty executive summary that just hits the high-level look. These are the problems we have. There are some easy fixes. Nobody wants to create any more work for anyone, you know, to do. I'm sorry, my picture didn't want to have any, so we may have to share a few pieces of paperwork. I can email this, I have that address as well, so I can email this up here. But, you know, so I think, big picture is just that, you know, Rye City School District put a lot of time and effort into the bid work for the school lunches, and what Aramark promised to provide is essentially sadly not what's being shown on the shelves or on the menus. I think some of us that are newer to the district have only started to uncover that when we see little things trickle in through our kids' backpacks, and when we log in and see what our kids are getting via Nutrislice, and it's very surprising and sometimes kind of alarming. So not just at Osborne, but we have been having conversations at Midland, at Milton, and I think there are groups of us that are kind of saying the same thing to our principals and our PTOs, and there's just different levels of reception and different time and energy and resources available at the different elementary schools. So essentially, we would love to have the ability to work with someone on the district level. If there's a wellness coordinator, it is mentioned in our wellness policy that there's a wellness coordinator. I don't know if that person exists anywhere, but if there's a wellness coordinator that we could work with, that would be great. But at the end of the day, we just really want to help put healthier, more nutritious options in front of our kids, especially our little kids, because, I mean, I have, my seven-year-old can tell you, when she gets to choose what she wants, it's usually cookies and popcorn, so we need to utilize resources to help them make better choices. So on the executive summary, you just have some ideas for what that could be, and there are specific people that I know of that have committed to me, like, hey, look, if we can get some attention on this, I will donate my time, I will donate, you know, whatever it is. But I think, I think we can get a lot more out of Aramark. I think we just have to, like, push and pull in the right direction. I don't think we need to spend any more money. I think it's just about better utilizing, you know, the resources that are already there.
Great. Kate, if you could just state your name and address.
Yes. Kate Velasquez. Address is 97 Osborne Road. We're right across the street from Osborne.
And I would just add, if you're worried about the critical listening skills of your seven-year-old, she gave you a very good scowl when you made that comment, which you couldn't say.
They, they listen better when it's not me speaking, but, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. And Kate, just for your information, Tracy Barnett is our wellness coordinator.
Ah, okay.
So as per the policy indicates, there is a wellness coordinator, and it is Tracy Barnett. And the wellness, yes, it's listed on the website. The wellness committee will be meeting, and we'll certainly take a look at the documentation you provided. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Okay. Can I have motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't all jump at once. Kelsey Johnson, thank you. Seconded by Vivek Mahath. Okay, for us, let's take a look at our consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Any questions or comments?
I'll just make one comment on the WJCS agreement. So it's a one-year agreement, but because of the legal requirements of the school district, it will come before you again at the reorg meeting in July, because we can only, you can only approve until June 30th, and that will extend it out for the remainder of the one-year term. The services will exist over the summer for students and families, so that's something that Dr. Friedenberg is working with the principals and WJCS on the referral process and all of those machinations. But it is for a full-year, 12-month calendar year.
Great. Thank you. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda special education. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. That would be six to nothing with Christopher Petto absent. So, tonight on our consent agenda, as Dr. Byrne highlighted earlier and just previously, we have an agreement with Westchester Jewish Community Services to provide onsite school-based mental health services, which will both be preventative and primary comprehensive for all of our students K to 12. This, just to be very clear, is in addition to and is not in place of our current services that we are able to provide through our school-based personnel. And we are very fortunate that Dr. Friedenberg will be providing the oversight for these services here at the district. And additionally, students who are receiving services from, through this provider, will have to have additional consent to have these services provided to their students. So it is not something automatically that comes under the umbrella. They will have to have a second layer of consent from their families, just so everybody understands. Additionally, we are very fortunate to have a donation this evening from the Rye Fund for Education in the amount of $7,500, which supports our Makerspace materials at all three of our elementary schools. This is a great example of the fund's ability to ensure equal access to learning materials across the district and really supporting our district-wide initiatives. So we thank all those at the Rye Fund for Education, as well as the community members who so graciously supported the Rye Fund for Education in their last 30 days, 30, was it 30 for 30?
300.
300, that was it. I was going ESPN for a moment, I'm sorry. 330 days. Sorry. I'm here, I promise. And additionally, we have not on this, so as we wrap up this consent agenda, last consent agenda, we had the retirement of Laura Schilling, excuse me, and we, at that time, approved the retirement, but we wanted to take a minute at this meeting to mark this occasion. So it is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime Rye City School District stalwart Laura Schilling. Laura joined the district in 2005 as a senior office assistant in the Rye High School Special Education Department. In 2006, she moved to the assistant principal's office at Rye High School and worked there as a senior office assistant for 11 years, as assistant to the high school assistant principals Wayne Mattis, Julia Chung, Bobby Zigarelli, and Suzanne Short. In 2017, she switched roles again, and her title was changed to database assistant. As such, she became a data manager focused on scheduling. In 2018, she moved offices from the high school to the central administration building. Since 2018, Laura has been president of the secretarial clerical, school nurse, and computer aid unit, and has been in charge representing those employees and of negotiating the group's collective labor agreements with the Rye City School District. A longtime resident of Rye, before becoming, before coming to the Rye City School District, Laura worked for seven years as the recreation registrar at the Rye Recreation Department. Prior to that, she spent 11 years as a systems engineer at IBM and Aramark. She began her career as a bookkeeper at Realtor Douglas Elliman Gibson &amp; Ives in New York City. Laura has a bachelor of administration degree from Pace University. Caitlin Saison, Rye City School District Director of Technology and Chief Information Officer, said of her, "Laura has been an asset to the technology data team for several years. She has been instrumental in designing our school schedules and supporting the buildings with their programming K to 12. Laura always went above and beyond her duties, and we will be missed dearly. I can't thank Laura enough for all of her help and support over the years. I hope she enjoys retirement, as she truly deserves it. We wish Laura all the very best in her retirement, and thank you for all your years of service." We have nothing under presentation discussion, too, so now it is time for communications to and from the board. Do we have any updates for the board and district committees? See, curriculum council met. Is anybody able to attend the curriculum council meeting? Perhaps Mr. Petto? I know he's on the, but he isn't here this evening, so we'll have to wait. Hopefully, he'll be able to provide us an update upon return. I'll have to let him know. Policy committee?
So the last policy committee meeting was on November 2nd, and we continue to make our way through reviewing our older policies. We are solidly into the aughts.
Ooh.
My SAT word for today.
That's a big one, too.
Yes, it is. And we will have our next meeting on December 21st. We actually just approved an update on a policy in tonight's agenda for student personal expression. And typically, we get some sort of update from NISBA at some point, but we have not gotten one yet, so I'm sure that will be coming.
They might still be recovering from the annual conference.
They must be, yes. Typically, there's one in October, but we still haven't gotten it. So we'll continue to keep reviewing our older policies until we get that and see what we have to review there. But that's all for policy right now.
Okay, excellent. And as you will see, we have future meetings, policy committee just as noted on the 21st. The wellness committee will also be meeting on the 21st, and then facilities, technology, and curriculum thereafter. So we'll be certain to have updates as needed. Our next board meeting is January 10th, 2023. Seems like a long time. And we will be talking about the academy, which is always a highlight, to be able to see what wonderful work is happening there. So if there is nothing else from anyone else, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Kelsey Johnson, seconded by Vivek Mahath. All those in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to our presenters, and we'll see you in 2023. Happy holidays.